It is just the information of everybody, we are now being recorded. Really careful you turn.
All right, well, thank you everyone for your time tonight. I'm Paula Robinson with Grand City Partners. We're the owners project manager for this project at Smith Memorial Hall. I'm joined here by Joe Shae from Grand City Partners. And they will be walking in at probably any moment. We'll feature members of Holmes and Edwards who's an architect working on this project. So, thank you for entertaining our application for eligibility for the restoration and rehabilitation of Smith Memorial Hall at 207 Main Street.
Actually, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. All right, here we go. Just for a brief bit of history, Smith Memorial Hall was built in 1889 by Alfred Smith. He was a real estate mogul out of Newport. It was built in more into his late wife Anna, who was originally from Dayton. He commissioned John Dixon Johnston to design and build this building. And he's a well-known architect throughout the New England and Newport area. This building is clearly a historic asset to the town of Dayton, which is why it has been purchased. Hopefully as the new Dayton Public Library in the future. But in order to protect and maintain this building, we have an application for eligibility before you. Where we're proposing some modest reconfiguration of interior spaces. A lot of this is driven by ADA accessibility and building efficiency. And also installing some new energy efficient heating and air conditioning. Installing some new LED lighting, new floor finishes as needed throughout the building, which is not a lot. And some plumbing for public use. Currently, right now, we're doing some exterior renovations and rehabilitation. We are replacing the historic red cedar shingles with red cedar shingles. And the shingles are just beyond unusable. They're not able to be restored, so they're being replaced. We are installing some fascia, soffit and other elements, window trim that need to be replaced. Restoring is the priority, but if it needs to be replaced, we're doing that. And we're installing some blown-in insulation while the shingles are off of the building. And that's so that we don't disturb any of the interior walls in the building. Currently, the building does not have any insulation that we know of, so it's really energy inefficient. And these activities are really here to help make the building weather tight and restore the building. These are just some pictures of the red cedar shingles being installed. You can see the blown-in insulation being installed in the picture to your bottom left. And then the cedar shingles being installed in a closer picture of the trim and fascia. The renovations that we are proposing. This is a floor plan of the current conditions of Smith Memorial Hall. For orientation, the bottom of the page is the front of the building here with the curvilinear window. And Main Street is right towards the bottom. Right now, you currently enter the building, there's two ways to enter the building. One is through these front doors. Most people enter through this handicap accessible ramp to the right of the building. That we're proposing that that handicap accessible ramp be moved away from the building. Because the windows that are currently there, unfortunately are not original to the building. They open outwards, which provides a safety concern of people that are walking up those windows. And they're kind of, you know, level with people walking. So we're proposing to pull that away from the building. As you walk in, there's a handicap accessible bathroom straight ahead. There's some office space to your right. And there's a large assembly area as you walk in to your left. Towards the front of the room is a stage. And to the left of that is a kitchen area. And towards the back of the room or the front of the building is a curvilinear space, which is the main entrance. We are proposing to. I guess currently the stage is not accessible. It's only accessible by stairs, so it's not accessible for anyone with disabilities. We're proposing to build a ramp to the stage so that that's more accessible. We are proposing to build, we're looking into building a handicap accessible bathroom up off of the stage. We believe it will fit, but we're just looking into that. We'll finalize that with the final application. But definitely reorganizing the internal configuration of this storage room that's off of the stair, the stage here to the left. We are proposing to frame and cover a stairwell to the basement. It's not safe, it's not to code, it's not usable, so we're just going to cover that up. Install new floor finishes as needed there. And we're proposing to bring up the floor of the kitchen so that it's at grade with the stage. The height allows us, the height in the kitchen allows us to do that, and that will make that area more accessible. Towards the front of the building, we're also proposing to frame and cover a stairwell that goes down in the front of the building. As well, again, just to make that building, that area of building more efficient.
Do you mind if we stop you and ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Go out each cycling set again to the end.
Yeah, no, you can go back.
There seemed to be quite a bit of information. Is there any evidence of renovations that have happened prior to this that may not be of historical value? Like I just think of areas like the stage, does the stage seem to be original? Or is it something that possibly was added on at a later date and doesn't have historical value to the building?
I would take Jim's expertise on this. I believe the stage is original to the, to the building.
We don't have access to the original for our, my plan is to have this.
Sorry, I introduced you before you walked in.
It begins to as a late guy.
Yeah.
But it would seem to be, I mean, you see photographs of the building and it was a memorial hall, so to speak. So I think the stage is available for performing. And I think some of the insulated rooms are for preparation for performances and sort of things. So I think, I think the floor plan is pretty original. I don't think there have been any significant renovations to it, except perhaps in the basement, but that's not what we're talking about.
There is that handicap bathroom that I think was probably in storage room or some states that was retrofitted after. And there is sort of a knee wall that's up here on the stage that will probably be removed. I don't think that was original to the building either.
Question two, and this is just regards to the CPC guidelines under historical restoration and preservation is that. I think everything you've described so far falls within those guidelines as I read them. But with the caveat that at all times you seek to minimize the impact to the historical nature of the building. So are there any places where you feel you're pushing the envelope on that? Or do they all fall comfortably within that to, as far as you're concerned at this time?
I believe they all fall comfortably within that. So for instance, there's wainscoting on this staircase here that we will be removing and framing coming over. And we plan to use that on the ramp in the stage. There are some doorways that we're going to pin open because the doors just aren't usable. But we want to keep those there as a historic feature. So we're really trying to work with the historic character of the building. And we're not trying to modify or drastically change that at all in any way. Even the heating system, we're proposing a ducted mini split heating system throughout the building to be more efficient. Currently, it's an oil heating system that's just not efficient for the area. We're proposing it to be ducted so that you don't, you don't see it in the building. And it doesn't radically alter the building. So I believe everything that we're proposing is, is in harmony.
We won't have wall hangers such as that.
Yeah.
We're selecting choices so those don't exist within the historic interior.
Any questions, dimensions are from front to back, side to side.
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
While you, while you keep going on.
Okay.
And, yeah, so I just kind of, we didn't, there'll be more questions afterward. But the purposes of the committee is, is damn to say. We don't really have to know that it's become, become a library. Our job is to preserve, restore, rehabilitate historic buildings. So, so that's kind of what the focus is. I mean, I'd love to say it'd be a library. It doesn't have.
Yeah, these are really just, I believe these are really just to maintain the building and make it more accessible for future town use, whatever that is. All right, I will gloss over this next section, but I was, the point of this slide was just to show that our proposed renovations are in harmony with the proposed library plan as it currently stands. So we're not doing anything that you may have to drastically change in the future.
So the dimensions, pardon me, how many, sorry. Were 70 feet, roughly 70 feet, front to back. This is 35 feet from here to here. And then these bump outs are separate sizing, but this one's about 25, this one's about 18. But, you know, for very round numbers, 70 feet this way, 25, 35, 50, 60 feet this way. It's 4,500 square feet on the first floor of usable space.
Are there any walk coming down or anything that drastically changes the interior configuration now? Like from its historical nature in turn? Because you're trying to open it up, does it, are you proposing anything that would really change the history of its previous use?
The only walls that may be reconfigured would be in here with these two restrooms. That's just to reconfigure the space so that we can create that accessible restroom space. But beyond that, should I be correct when I'm wrong? But there's no other walls that are anticipated to come down or any other major changes in that respect.
I think the only other concern I have, the same note too, is when you had mentioned the elevation of the, of the kitchen floor. I would almost assume at this point, the kitchen floor probably is not original, is it?
Materials, the tile, I mean, the regular tile.
I would say it's not original material.
Okay.
It's also not ADA accessible, so by raising it up.
Right.
With an extra height, ceiling height. We still maintain compliance for windows and for ceiling height, but it becomes accessible.
And I do have some pictures, so I'll illustrate that to the next slide. So this slide is really, we're just reiterating here that this work isn't maintained, isn't meant to drastically change or alter the historic characteristics of the building. We really are trying to work with the historic characteristics and keep them and maybe even have them shine a little bit more than, than what they do now. And we're really just, our main focus is to provide a barrier-free, safe access for the building and to protect and maintain that, the building for futures. I apologize, these are a little dark, they're hard to see. But for anyone who hasn't been in the building, this is the main atrium space with the stage. And this picture to your left here. And then the picture to the right is that curvilinear space. It's very hard to see, but there is the stairwell that we're proposing to get rid of and bring cover over. And we'll be reusing those materials for our ramp in front of the stage along here to make that accessible. This is the kitchen that we were just talking about. So you can see here that the windows are very high in the picture to the left. And I believe it's about a 10 or 12 foot height. So we can bring the floor height up to this stair level to make it more accessible, which those stairs head to the stage. For a timeline, hopefully with a successful CPC application and town meeting approval in June. Construction had commenced in July. And it will take about 18 months to complete, so winter 2024 would be the completion date as of right now. That's it. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? I'm just curious if the work being done is according to the Secretary of Interior standards.
It is, yes, we're, we're working, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We're working with all of the recommendations within the Secretary of Interior standards.
I have a question. You had in the eligibility application, because it's not a project application. Yeah, it's just an eligibility request. Seven specific points about the kind of, you know, what you were just covering. Is that a best guess at this point? Or do you think that is actually a, for this particular request, a good overview of what you're going to be coming forward when you come forward with project details?
I would say with about 80%, 85% confidence that that's our, our good overview of what we'll be proposing. We start, we still have to go over, we're still getting more information about the building measurements. Trying to see if we can fit that ADA bathroom, something. So there could be changes, but that's a majority of what we're proposing.
Okay. So can, can you tell us what it is that your elements within the building that you're going to have to remove? You might have gone over, but you know, for instance, wainscoting. You said something that you have to remove some wainscoting at some point?
We do, yeah. In the stairwell in that curvilinear space, there's wainscoting that we will have to remove in order to frame and cover that stairwell there. But we do plan to use that in the ramp, on the accessible ramp in front of the stage. There might be some items that we may have to remove in order to, or there will be some items that we'll have to remove in order to reconfigure the bathroom spaces that are up off of the stage. But again, those aren't really original to the building. And if we need, if we can reuse it, we certainly will, but if there's value to that.
What about the, the ceiling of the, or the, of the main hall or the reading room or something they, I don't know. Is there any alterations to the ceiling of the main hall at all?
I don't think so, no.
There may end up being some linear diffusers supplying heat and cooling air from a ducted system. But the basic profile and the volume of the space and the details of the ceiling will not change.
What about the floor of the main hall? Is that original?
We believe that's original, yes.
It is original, other than maybe refinishing it or something?
Yeah, refinishing and maybe just some area crops or carpets. That would be a future of library thing, actually, but.
Are there any, it sounds like, might sound like there's a leading question. But is there anything in your mind or the company's mind that would be marginally acceptable for, to change? Or anything that would be acceptable according to the Department of Interior's, you know, recommendations and so forth, which I assume you read? Okay, so, yeah, is, what would, in your mind, what would be the failure points of eligibility? Unless, unless you don't feel there are any?
Currently, I, I don't feel that there are any. I'm not sure.
The guidelines take into account the fact that you, a lot of these historic buildings were built in a town and certain components weren't available, they weren't recommended, they weren't taken into account. So things like handicapped access, ADA compliance. Heating systems that may have been baseboard or something that wasn't there formally because the building was probably heated by fireplaces.
Let me interrupt you for a second. Speaking of heating system, what impact does this new heating system using a heat pump, I suppose, or something like that? What, what impact does that have on, on the building as it is now? Construction impact or ducting impact or anything like that?
Ducting impact mostly, I would say.
So speaking with the town building inspector last at, at the Dayton Historic Commission, which a lot of you were there anyway. I asked if the duct work was, the current duct work was reusable in any way. And he said no. So that means that that duct work and the hot air furnace currently there, they will be removed. And then new duct work. Now, where is the duct work going, going to go for the new system? How is that going to be routed? Are there?
This, this, this will actually, see. Some of the existing duct work comes up through this wall. The existing boiler room is under this wing. The existing duct work would not be reused, we would use the chase. And then our goal is to run the new duct work through the basement underneath this floor and then come up. So there'll be, there won't be duct work soffits or anything within the main area. They will come up through the basement. The basement is not part of this proposal, it'll become an accessible space. It's not ADA compliant, so we would use the space underneath and then come up.
So is the floor, where the, you're going to have some grills or something or?
Exactly.
So, and then the rest of the, so that would mean cutting holes in the floor and so forth. But what about the rest of the building? Would there be any impact in the rest of the building?
It would be the same. We can get underneath the office space and underneath the kitchen space from basement access.
So currently is the duct work that's currently there, is that service grills or outlets, ringlets that are in the ceiling currently or in the walls?
There are some in the floors, there are some in this, in this wall, they're just on the opposite side. And there's a major medallion, air return right in the center of the room. It's quite ornamental, using the right terms, Jim.
Well, it's, it is, I think it was a vent that, on the, that roof structure that was there originally. I think it just sucked unwanted air ventilation and that sort of thing. There was one in Quincy City Hall, which we worked on, and there were a couple of turrets on the top. And they were the very same kinds of structures, Joe was talking about the ceiling. And it was really, they had a chain on them, they opened them and went the air.
Okay, so the ornamental part that is kind of the way in the ceiling, that would be kept there, right?
That there, yeah. We, we have learned since it's gotten colder, that's where most of our heat and oiling costs. Oil costs are going straight up through that, so we're going to insulate over the top of that, part of the efficiency steps.
As far as you know, but again, just to keep on the HVAC system. The existing grills that are, are in the walls or in the floors, do those seem to be of any historic value? Or do they seem to be modern where it would make some more?
Historic value is what you'd like to think about, reusing those as possible. And they don't distribute the air quite as efficiently as modern day distribution louvers.
Right.
But if we can use them, when the mechanical engineers will take a look at that, we'll try to use them if we can. They may end up just being, as Joe says, they're, if we're coming up through the floor, those could be devices which allow return here to go back to, through the system.
Yeah, I don't know this.
Playing good for that.
I'm sure that, you know, mechanical engineers, but that might even be a point if we bring a fresh air into the building with an ERV system or something like that, maybe we can utilize that as well.
That's right.
Yes, Jonathan?
A couple, couple of quick questions if it's okay. It's harder by Zoom when you're, when you're not there, so I'll try to get my questions in at one time. The first question is with regard to the stairwells that are going to be closed off and flooring will be put in its place. So for example, I think in the area that was referred to as the teen room and then one other area. Are those stairwells, original stairwells, or were they built later on for other reasons? Do you know? I know, I know that the intent right now is not to use the basement level, but I'm just curious about those stairwells.
Yeah, I believe one was original and one was added later on.
Which one was added later on?
The teen room.
Yeah, the teen room is definitely newer.
The teen room stairwell was cut in. The other stairwell is, I would call it a back of the house stairwell.
And that's currently blocked off.
It's blocked off anyways.
For safety issues anyways.
Okay, and then my, my next question for now is with regard to the ceiling and lighting. And I'm asking this partly from an ADA perspective and partly from an aesthetic perspective. Which is, is there lighting in there currently that is salvageable and going to be used? Or is this proposal for entire new lighting and what type? And I ask that as well with ADA in mind in terms of soft lighting, soft colors, et cetera. But again, not knowing what's there right now that's useful.
I'm pretty sure there's no lighting in the building that was original to it. And I'm not even 100% sure. It's hard to say what was going on when the building was built, if electricity was even available to the building at that point in time. But I would say more scrutiny will take place. But if there's any, anything found that resembles old lady fixtures or gas lamps or something, we'll try to make proper use of it. I don't think we're just going to touch electrically to try to salvage. It's all more.
Pardon my question, whether there are any kind of carvings or sconce type carvings or anything within the walls? Even if it's up higher, that potentially would need to be removed or replaced or re, or refurbished?
Well, we've all had limited opportunities to be in the building because it's occupied. But once the current tenant is out, we're going to have a real hard look at all those kinds of issues. And anything that has historic value or even interesting value will be looked at carefully and trying to be, try to make it part of the new renovation, restoration.
Would it potentially make sense? I don't know if this is normally done or not, so I'm just throwing it out there. But since in, at the February meeting, I'm assuming that's, assuming that this is accepted for the, for the initial application today. That at the February meeting, you would be submitting an extensive plan, including architectural renderings, blueprints and so forth as well. Does it make sense potentially? And is it allowable for us to arrange for a walkthrough for the CPC? Prior to that meeting or at the beginning of that meeting, even if we start?
Absolutely. I mean, I think it would be helpful for everyone on, sort of like on the CPC to really have the context, you know. Oh, yeah, the look and feel, the real flavor of the building. So as the CPC does begin to dive into the application. Oh, yeah, you have, oh, our committee has, so like they're boots on the ground, the context of what. Oh, yeah, the application is proposing, oh, yeah, the changes is, oh, yeah, the changes to the existing. Oh, you know, our, our building elements are proposing as well, so I think that'll be really helpful.
Yeah, Jonathan just kind of just took the words right out of my mouth. So I was just, just going to say for all intensive purposes, tonight we're going to talk about the eligibility. Where, I don't want to get like, we could carry on all night talking about what it's going to become. But that's more of our, when we, if, if and when we get to the funding process, we're going to really ask those questions. Something we need to spend an enormous amount of time on what the changes are going to be. Until we have the opportunity to review the application and also visit the site if possible. One thing that I would just like to ask of all of you outside of this actual application is just some of your experience that you've had working on other projects, your involvement with historic projects and other CPCs. If you don't mind.
We'll let the longest list go first, and then we'll skip in.
Well, I'm George, my father, who started my firm, this firm in 1961. And I've been marketing Holmes and Edwards for a long time. But my father did a lot of creziestical work and he did historic buildings. But recently, I've been lucky enough to work on a few important buildings. So there are a few in Quincy. We renovated Quincy Town Hall. A few years ago, did a thorough renovation of an 1844 masonry building designed by Solomon Willard. There also, he was the father of Quincy Granite Industry. He was the designer of the Monkey Hill Monument. But this is a beautiful granite structure, totally done all of them. We've worked on the United First Parish Church right across the street from City Hall. And that is a building designed by the same architect of design. Quincy Market for, designed Quincy way back when. But that's a National Register building. The city hall is, no, the church is a historic landmark building. City Hall is a written, a National Register building. We've worked on renovations to the Adams Academy, which is an 1877 building up in Hancock Street, the ways. It was a building built as a school with money donated by President John. Uh, it was, uh, a building built as a school with money donated by President John Adams. And, uh, that, that again is a landmark building. That's the top shelf, but we've done two or three jobs on that one. We're getting ready to, uh, do, uh, an exterior envelope assessment of Quincy's Crane Library, which was designed by, um, H.H. Richardson. And, uh, that's a pretty significant, that's another landmark building. So, uh, and, uh, trying to think what, what else we've got. We're working on the entrance to, now to, uh, Mount Lawson Cemetery, redesign of that, which is, uh, a, um, national historic landmark as well. And I just might say that our, in, our engineer, uh, the, the mechanical engineers that we, um, use almost exclusively. Um, and we're going to put their own on for this particular project, but they are currently working on HVAC and mechanical plumbing, electrical upgrades to an H.H. Richardson library in Eastern, near office in Northeastern. They volunteer anybody from any of the committees that would like to go up and see what's going on up there with that historic building and the renovations that they are doing and how they are impacting the building. We should, uh, anybody in, I would feel, just let us know, get to a tour up there, so.
That's right. And I was fortunate enough, uh, twelve years ago, I was the program manager for the restoration of Northeastern building. We did the aim shovel works, program management, the restoration of those buildings, save them from demolition. Uh, and then through that, ended up working on a number of the H.H. Richardson buildings in Eastern, uh, because it was a pleasure, uh, to be around those types of buildings, one of which is in Quincy. And Holly and I have been working on a number of items that you, you are one of a few CPCs we'll be seeing in the next few weeks. What else do we have?
Uh, we also have something before, uh, the Quincy Community Preservation Commission for, um, a renovation of the Veterans Memorial Stadium, which is a, a stadium with a football field and a, um, little recreational facility seating, um, up there. I would reasonably work along, uh, a wall out there.
So it's a nineteen thirty-three WPA works project, um, that is now ready for restoration. Boy, it lasted very well, um, but it, it needs some love. So we're doing the same presentation in a different venue in two weeks.
Presentation, so this is normal, please. Something you do regularly?
How, how many night meetings this week, Holly?
This is good.
Yes, we're very lucky.
That, that time of year, yes.
Yeah, if you guys have any other questions, please do that. Okay.
So, uh, yeah, I really appreciate how much attention you guys gave to CPA guidelines and those, uh, which makes it easy, a lot easier to talk about. So, uh, so do you believe, or maybe this question, do you believe that being constrained to follow the, uh, Department of the Interior guidelines is going to add significantly to the cost of the project? Is that really, um, I, I, Kevin was great. He added those books, uh, with the email he sent out and they're pretty scary.
My, my personal opinion is no. And honestly, it's because it's, it's the right thing to do. This building really does scream to be a library or a historic use. When you walk in and when you get to see it, it really does embrace you for, for its history, for its layout, uh, for the warmth that comes out of that great historic work. We were thrilled, for example, to be able to, uh, rebuild Red Cedar on the outside of the building if it is a bit of a premium. But it's the right thing to do. We feel like the, uh, upon the interior standards in this case, really right in alignment with the way, uh, Titan, we recommend Titan move, um, forward with.
And, uh, who, who, uh, is the town accountable to for complying with those guidelines? Is there inspection? We just self-certify, we're compliant or? I would say nobody right now. We have a spiritual intent here, but the building isn't registered yet. And, uh, there's latitude, but I think if we all try to, well, as we can, there is, there's language in the, in the guidelines that give you latitude for things like code and, and, uh, handicapped access and those, that, that, those are current things everybody has to deal with. And they try to make sure that you don't destroy any important features, any geometry that might be important to the building. All those structural kinds of issues, they try to make sure that you don't destroy the essence of the building while you're making these code-related upgrades. But they do give latitude. They know these buildings have to be used, they have to be accessible. And, uh, I think working together with the Joe and team and the town and, uh, on this building, we could all come to some agreement on what's important and what isn't quite so important. So that might take, but I don't think you're, you're required at all to do anything because there's nobody's, the building is, is beautiful. It's historic, but it's not registered. Nobody's going to be looking over your shoulder except your townspeople. Well, it does, it does say in the CPA though, that we do have to follow the guidelines. That's why that question came up first.
If you get eight thousand people watching, so.
Yes, no, that's what I said, the townspeople, we want to make sure this is just right, like everything. Yeah, so it's, you know, so as I understand it, the town has already funded those shingles and the other, you know, external improvements. So everything on your list here is internal, all right? It's indoor, right? Okay, so, um, you know, so I mean, I guess the way I see is that we're kind of, as you say, morally obligated, plus obligated to the town to follow those guidelines. Regardless of whether Ransford or who's signing off on it. Uh, so.
You go one point of the conversation.
Yeah, the ramp, the handicap ramp on the outside of the building, that is external.
Okay.
But everything else is.
As it pertains to that, just real quick, not to interrupt you. Uh, the, the windows that do extend outward, are those original?
No, they're not.
Okay.
Unfortunately, they, they.
Well, I just, like, since the beginning of this, since this was even a thought process, it's always popped in my head because I have seen the exterior of the building is. It does, so at that point, it doesn't make sense to address the window. Is it, it's not cause prohibitive to change the windows and leave the ramp? Like, is that the best approach?
Um, the windows are in good condition. The ramp is not in good condition anyways. Um, and then also without safety hazard, I think it's best money put forward.
Well, I just, I just wanted to ask the question, is it, you know, better to replace the windows and leave the ramp or vice versa, you know?
So, you know, to kind of follow along in that, um, so when these, you know, and, you know, I, I think on the list here, everything is, is certainly eligible on the face of it. You know, maybe the other thing we're not allowed to do is maintenance, all right? So everything on here looks like capital improvements. Maybe the floor finishes are pushing the load a little bit, I think. Uh, you know, in general, it does look like capital upgrade, preservation and all the right things. So I did want to ask, what happens, the second, the second floor is the basement, right? So what happens to that? Is it sealed off now or is there any usability remaining after these improvements are put in?
The basement as it stands cannot be used. Um, it can be accessed through, uh, there is an outside access at the back of the building, so it can be accessed that way. But I think for safety and co-reason said that it should not.
Right, I'm just saying the future, okay, is there any?
There is a possibility in the future to address those.
As of now, it'll be strictly mechanical.
Correct.
Yeah, we don't have any, if you, yeah, all that we know is way in the future. I'll be focused on the main level, that's it.
Right, and, uh, so maybe just questions for Rod maybe. As far as you understand, Ron, the town is committed to going forward with the library project, using this for the library? Or let's say, I know that may be, you know, not a very clearly defined term, but is that how you understand things?
That's, that's correct. Yes.
Yeah, there's, it's not a realistic possibility that the town could take a ninety-degree turn on this.
No.
Yeah, right. All right, so having said all that, once these renovations are complete, assuming, you know, they get completed, whether it's through CPC funding or through town funding, uh, direct town funding, is it ready to go for the next round, which is going to be to turn it into a library? In other words, is this a complete set of improvements to prepare the shell of a library?
Yes, uh, yeah, like, I mean, uh, so, so yes, everything we're planning on, so the answer is yes. The only additional, uh, aspect that we as a town will need to work with the, uh, work with the library on and, uh, you know, um, think, um, yeah, uh, uh, all I can be capital outlay is really the furnishing of the inside. Uh, we don't have the ability, as you know, uh, through CPC to furnish the interior. Uh, but it, so, so in terms of the shell of the building, uh, uh, with the, uh, with the a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, actually that was approved in the June twenty twenty-two town meeting to begin the, uh, to be, to begin the exterior improvements, uh, plus the, um, plus the two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars that you marked that we secured as well because we won. So, yeah, one of the things we're trying to do, everything we can, so, yeah. Uh, 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 what to, uh, uh, what to, uh, 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 not lie on act. So, yeah, oh, yes, you know, I, I actually lie as much as, so much as possible. Oh, yeah, like, like raise an appropriate, another taxpayer funding, uh, like what? So that's why one, so I got the opportunity, the first opportunity is we, uh, I actually have the ability to use seven hundred ninety thousand dollar NAPF funding. Uh, that didn't have, that didn't have any, that didn't have any local impact at all. So we were able to definitely provide the building. Uh, as I mentioned, we do, uh, thanks, uh, thanks to voters at the June twenty-two town meeting, they did approve, uh, additional a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to begin the outside improvements. Uh, that was really made possible, uh, by the additional two hundred thousand dollars we secured, uh, 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 through the FY twenty-three state budget. Uh, we're also in the process of applying, uh, for roughly two, two hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in additional grants to the state. Uh, yeah, like the leveraging every, so, so, yeah, like generally all funding source we can to make sure we, so, yeah. So, yeah, do everything we can to take the pressure off, I have to fund this.
Right, right. And, you know, those who remember the last time the library went before town meeting, it was probably, you know, the cost of the project was particularly getting rejected. So do you, I mean, this is probably really hypothetical, I, I can't answer it. You think you're going to have that, uh, June town meeting, uh, a parallel proposal with this one to move ahead with funding to complete the library? Is it going to be all one package?
Uh, would, uh, uh, just by, so, so just my take, I, uh, you know, I believe the interior furnishings would need a little more time to flush out. Uh, 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 so, uh, as I was saying, June of twenty twenty-three would likely be a little too premature for that.
Anybody else have any questions? Just, Andrew, let's see, Andrew, um, just real quick too. So we also have, uh, in conjunction with the application, we also, um, have a letter of support, um, from the Dyson, Dyson historical commission. Um, I read it too, also it's reported. This was sent on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Dear Kevin and committee, on January tenth, twenty twenty-three, the Dyson historical commission identified the Smith Memorial Hall at two oh seven Main Street as being of local historic significance. The vote was unanimous to, to identify the Smith Memorial Hall as locally significant in history, archaeology, architecture or culture in the town of Titan. At this meeting, the library committee and Granite City partners presented the concept drawings for the proposed rehabilitation of Smith Memorial to be the new home of Titan's public library. The rehabilitation plans presented are mindful of the historic elements of the building and the importance of maintaining the historic, the historical integrity. Rehabilitation plans provide Titan citizens with a library while preserving one of Titan's historic buildings. The Dyson Historic, Historical Commission supports the plans of the Library Building Committee to repurpose the Smith Memorial Hall for the use as the Titan Public Library. Sincerely, Patricia Gales, Chair, Dyson Historical Commission. Mrs. Gales, do you have anything that you'd like to add to the?
Basically, it's a good to see a building being reused, repurposed, um, Smith Memorial Hall. I grew up in town, it's always a part of our childhood and it was used as a hall. It's, you know, been owned by two different churches, or three different churches, actually. Um, something that such a stark interest and resources. I think it's important to say, and I'm so glad the town has it personally, I'm glad the town has it because if a private citizen bought it, we'd have no control over restoring it or keeping it even. It would be the owner's choice as to what to do. So I just think it's an exciting project and the commission looks forward to, you know, seeing all of the elements that are of historic value incorporated and keep the same. I'm on the Library Building Committee, so I'll be watching for you.
Um, just a quick question as it pertains to its historic type, um, does this building have the potential to become a registered?
It has the potential to be on a national, um, register, yes. We had the survey that we just finished, a new white survey, that was one of the buildings that was done, it was updated. The consultant, in her opinion, considered that it wasn't, was eligible for a national historic, registered historic district. Um, so the next steps are, we have to bring it forward to the, um, Massachusetts Historical Commission. They determine if it's eligible for the register and then there's that application, there's a whole process for it. The other point is that building is also in an area, um, that was identified as a South of Titan Village area, um, which includes parts of Main Street and Pleasant Street and some of Water Street, to be another national registered district. But we'd have to, you know, go through that process through the Mass Historical Commission.
Do you feel that any of the renovations being made will affect its ability to be registered?
Not so far, no. Um, the one element that I was very excited about was that the red cedar shingles were affordable, that we could do that because the other discussion was about, um, vinyl siding. And the vinyl siding would have put it right out of the running. You know, so those shingles are very, very important to the exterior. That building is part, it's called the, um, Japer Shingle Building. And you see them down in Newport, you see them in Bear Haven, um, they're a very stylistic, you know, um, historic style. So, um, that's Titans, we're very lucky to have that.
And that just looks better than. Um, yeah, does anybody else have any other questions that they want to ask? Um, at this point, I think it's, it's pretty clear that the project is eligible. We'll have a little bit of more work to do once we get to, to funding. But, um, with all that we've discussed, I will entertain a motion to approve, let's say, accept the application for, and approve the application of eligibility.
Okay, as I understand, I mean, we're approving its eligibility, correct?
Correct, we're going to approve it as eligible. So I have a motion from Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Fontaine, all in favor?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Um, thank you all for your presentation. We appreciate it.
I just wrap up, like, I think my reading.
I'm sending an invitation to you to go forward with us to build it if you find it working.
Yeah, I think what we'd like to do is once we move forward and we get into that, like we had stated earlier, once we get into that, the application for funding, it would be great. And it would be beneficial for all of us to have a site visit. Um, I think, you know, we can discuss it amongst ourselves in, in that meeting, but we'll probably find some time, um, between, uh, uh, our February meeting when we, when you guys submit that application, um, and so between then and our March meeting to actually site visit and, and go over it and really look over everything well. Um, so that we can have further discussion in, in March. Thank you all so much.
Mr. Perrin, if you need me for something else, I'm on the West Coast, there's a three-hour time difference and I need to get involved in something else.
Yeah, we're good. Yeah, you can, you can bounce off if you need to, we'll still have a call.
If you don't have a call, I must stay on, just let me know.
We're, we're good. Um, I have, I, we still have five here, so we're, you're, if you need to bounce, you can.
All right, I've got about five minutes and then I bounce, thank you.
All right, um, so next, um, next on the agenda, we just had, um, review and discuss the secretariat of interior standards for rehabilitation. I think we've all seen it, we were asking these questions while during their presentation. Um, I would just encourage everybody to kind of, let's do our due diligence to review that as much as possible. So when we do have the application for funding and a more, um, laid out outline of the work that's being done, we're, we're just educated on, on what we need to be looking at. Um, and, and does anybody have anything to add on that? Any other new business? Um, so next we have, uh, review discussing act our meeting minutes, um, from our meeting in December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you, Elizabeth, so let's forget those over to, does everybody have a chance to review those?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Question, I, 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 um, before we go to the minutes, if it's okay. Um, did we want to discuss at all the question mark of the application of fourteen days? Or do we want to hold off on that so we can discuss that potential clarification?
We can, we, well, I'll put that on the agenda for February, I think we're all, we're okay for now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, just quick before we do, um, just, uh, do our minutes. Uh, we did have a little snafu with our application process when this came up and I think I didn't want to speak on behalf of everybody, but I do believe it was our understanding that our fourteen day period was kind of what we set for both phases, but our language was a little off in the beginning of the application versus later on.
I know I did not have that understanding, I thought eligibility could come in at any time and lots of years, and projects were fourteen days.
Well, I think, uh, maybe, we just end it, we can, we'll do this in depth in next week. We did have it a little, you know, I don't want to get it on, you know, Wednesday and we're having a meeting, there's been, yes, we have for everybody to have to scramble and, and do it ahead of time, but we'll, we can discuss that in February. Um, so do I have a motion to approve the meet, meeting minutes from twelve fifteen, twenty twenty-two? Motion, do I have a second? Second, any discussion? You're in that, all in favor? Aye.
Jonathan, aye.
So, and then next we have, our next meeting will be February sixteenth. So we do same time, same place, five thirty, your prime time. Yeah, we've been pretty much consistently doing five thirty because it allows Mr. Digits to join us for a little longer than you have been able to. Public input.
Uh, I just have a couple more questions. Funding, do you plan on going out for bond?
Um, I can't say that we would because I don't think, we don't know what the ask is yet. Um, if anybody has kind of followed what the committee has been doing. I did put on our last agenda, we did kind of review the bond process and it wasn't necessarily pertaining to this project. It was just an overall, um, educational opportunity for us, if it ever did come up. Um, but we don't know what the ask is gonna be for this project.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot, but, you know, I'm a supporter of the library, always have been, they all knew that. Uh, but I am not in support of the CPC going out to bond. And I'm not sure if it did go out to bond, would it have to be a two-thirds majority at town meetings? It would, okay, so, just so you know. Uh, I would be totally against that and I'll do everything in my power to have that voted down. The CPC is not a slush fund to the board of selectmen. Been saying that for years, you know, I've been involved with the CPC from day one. Um, I want this library to go through, but I want the CPC to have enough funds to fund everything we need. And when the, the bonding issue came up through the state, that's just a kind of a way for the CPA to keep everybody CPC in place. And it wouldn't be easy to dissolve the CPC also at a simple vote at a special town meeting, you know, because you gotta be clever. And I don't want the CPC to be dissolved either, but if it goes out to bond and it passes at a town meeting, uh, I wouldn't be surprised if somebody puts an article together to dissolve.
Well, just keep in mind that if that did happen, then we would have to essentially.
And that would really screw up the whole thing.
We would have to raise an appropriate to pay off that bond to be able to dissolve the CPC or the CPC would have to.
So the town would have to do that. And I don't have a problem with the CPC giving them a good chunk of the money that you have now, I'm all for that. Uh, we have a million seventy-five, hundred thousand, I don't know how much money you guys are sitting on now, does anybody know?
More than that, which.
More than that, okay, so I don't have a problem with you guys giving them a big chunk of money, I really don't.
Excuse me, what is that number?
I'm trying to look it up right now.
Yes.
You have to give me a couple of minutes to dig into the.
Yeah, but you, you gotta, you know, you don't have over a million, right?
No, it's, it's closer to seven figures than it is tough.
Yeah, yeah, you're all, you, you know, a couple months.
Excuse me, this is a public meeting and those numbers need to be shown to, even told out to the general public, I've asked that question, could I please have those numbers left, that's all.
If you may ask, just give them one moment to.
No, I think everybody in town wants to see this, I'm, no, I'm just, I don't want it to see it go to a bond, that's all. And, uh.
I think that's the bonding.
I hope it don't come, this is still.
No, I think that's the, uh, the sample bonding, in fact.
That's why I'm hesitant, because I watched all your meetings and I heard you guys talking about bonding.
Boy, I think you heard in that meeting, a lot of us are concerned about the impact.
I mean, everyone needs him, we're on CPC and this dotted in tune was very close with, uh, what's your guy's name?
Stuart Sagino. Stuart Sagino.
Stuart, yeah, yeah, you know. We've always worked with him, you know, he's a great guy, he'll do anything. But, you know, we need to buy some open space land, which has not been done since the CPC started. You know, we've given Spock and Rec a lot of money, um, the town clerk, historical, you know, we, we want to spread the wealth. I don't want to see it all go over there, you know, especially in a bond, that's just my opinion, I ain't gonna say anymore.
Thank you.
I just have a question to ask. Uh, former projects that were out there, if there's money listed that is still sitting in the unexpended expenditures, is the town still negotiating with any of these people for the Bomaire project?
So, as far as the Bomaire project, I have no knowledge of anything that's transpired with the Bomaire project. Um, and one thing, if, I don't know if you've kept up with the meeting, but one thing that we have been doing is, um, doing just funded project updates, so that is one that I will, uh, research between now and our next meeting and bring that up and I'll, I'll go back in the database.
You know, each expenditure is enough, it's been an ongoing process from the last five to six years, if, if the state's on hold. Yeah, well, let's just, you know, return the money back to the, to the fund.
Well, we have the same attitude, well, again, because you know all about the, not the, um, the fencing and lighting. Um, you know, we're this close to finishing that, so we want to be prepared prior to town meeting. Whatever's left over, I want to write a warrant article and return that money, so it's not sitting in limbo. Because it just doesn't make sense, it just, it causes a, I think, an accounting nightmare for us and for the town accountant. Um, so that's why we've been putting that as an agenda item monthly to kind of, but I will thank you for bringing that up, because I will add that, I was curious about the.
I think, uh, what Joe just said, who follows up on all of the projects that you, that the committee approves? And when funding goes out, are there certain benchmarks that these committees have to come back to you and say, this is what we've done so far, this is what we've spent, this is how much more we need?
So it depends, it's kind of case by case, um, so like the Historical Commission does a great job of reporting as like that project as, um, has progressed, I think essentially it's the job of the person representing their committee, like myself with Parks, to report where we're at with those projects. And then we're trying to normalize it where it is, like I was just saying to Mr. Ryan, that it's, it's an agenda item monthly now, so we, we're asking, you know, where is this at? We have this similar issue with housing, they have a big electrical project that has been kind of, you know, faulted because of COVID and a couple of the engineering, um, snafus, um, but we're trying to, you know, keep an eye on all our funded projects. So one, either we know they're completed and the money has been expended, or two, we're gonna move towards moving that money back into our, um, our reserves at, at town meeting.
So before the money is actually, actual dollars are sent over to whomever that work is inspected?
So, it's again, a little different, so in the position of the Historical Commission, so the Historical Commission reports back to us and then we actually approve that invoice. So we, as a committee, we review and approve that invoice, then it gets paid. Parks and Rec was a little bit different situation where that warrant article was written to be expended by Titan Parks and Recreation. So those invoices got paid directly from a special account between myself as the chairman of Parks and Rec and our town accountant department. And then I just report back to the commit, this committee to just let them know what our standing is on that.
So there are checks and balances in place to protect the taxpayer.
Yes.
The bottom line is taxpayer money that you're working with, that's committee money.
Right, yeah, that one percent.
Thank you.
I can confirm, I, I did, you know, I saw two large expenditures on the reports we get from the town accountant for the Plamont project. I asked Kevin, is this right, now, is, is, you know, is this the real deal?
Yeah, so actually, Dave Eckerson is our, essentially our, our financial, um, person for the committee, so he's the one, he's doing the most, spends the most time communicating with the town accountant and then reporting to us, or we ask questions of him and him of us to make sure that we're.
Yeah, so, you know, to answer the question about the balance, actually, this is, this is the most up to date, Kevin.
Okay.
This, this number corresponds to, so, the, um, the available balance is right now and now there is some designation on this for the different categories, you know, so.
This is just the undesigned.
No, no, this is the total of all categories, it's six oh nine four seventy-seven, a little over six hundred thousand dollars. Here we go.
Do you have a, a number, just so, because while we're talking about it, what, specifically the undesigned fund, is that?
That, that would be, that would take me a minute to add up here, but, um, yeah, so that would.
Because we do have an accumulated balance in, you know, open space in historic, well, partly not historical, has kind of come down a bit because of the projects that have been done and even housing, the, the twelve five that is, that gets designated yearly around that number.
Can I say what I don't want to see happen? I don't want to see all this work be done, right, the planning, the engineering, and then have it fall through a town meeting because of a bond, right? Because that would be so much a waste of time and resources. So if you can relay that to the board of selectmen and Mike Mullin, which I'm gonna relay it myself, I already did. Uh, I'm just gonna hammer it. But, uh, you know, it'd be a waste and they would set the library back another year, we don't want that.
No longer.
No, yeah, if not longer. So, is it, you can, we can figure out, or you guys can figure out how much of the pie you're willing to give to them and then let the board of selectmen come up with the rest, they can go out to bond. They can raise an appropriate, they can do anything, you know.
That one, I mean, once we see the application for funding.
It's gonna be probably a million dollars. Thereabouts.
So my reports are a little bit out of sync here, ones from November, ones from this month, but, uh, yeah, they're a little not perfectly in sync, the number undesigned is, uh, three hundred ninety-five thousand, out of that, six hundred and nine thousand. And the rest is, uh, you know, designated categories, historic as of November, uh, because we have spent money on the records preservation credits, historic is only twenty-three thousand, it is actually the most.
But you can take from other categories, right?
We can't, I don't think we can take.
The undesigned.
In this, in this situation, where, where if we wanted to, we could exhaust the historical reserve and take from the undesigned, but you couldn't take from open space.
Right, 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 yeah, right, the ten, ten, ten.
Right. But, yeah, if, say, if historical hadn't done any projects and there was a hundred thousand built up and it, we'd certainly be interested to use multiple funding clauses and write that article that way, but that's kind of not the situation.
That's all I got, and I want to thank you all for doing what you do.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, can I, okay, so can I expand on the bond? Okay, so Kevin circulated a spreadsheet, um, which, uh, we had, um, the town accountant fill in our numbers to a template that was provided by the State Community Preservation Coalition as a sample of bonding. And basically, I don't know if it was designed to do this, uh, but what it told us essentially is that if we borrow, if we bonded one point seven nine million dollars for twenty years at four and a half percent, that four and a half percent, I think is optimistic as an interest rate, but set that aside. If we bond that amount for some project, then we might as well disband because we would have no money for the next twenty years.
Correct.
So that's the max out, okay, number there.
Yeah, and that was pulled just from a generic template that the C, uh, Mass Community Preservation Coalition website has, it was just fabricated on a thing.
Right, so, you know, and that is, I mean, you can, um, you can turn that note, number over in your mind. I'm equally skeptical of bonding, I think it would be a very difficult thing to explain if town meeting, I think this project will already be complex to explain at town meeting, especially if there's two pieces. It has to be, you know, you have to manage the process and set people's expectations, that's just, you know, good citizenship, good leadership, so.
Just to throw this out there, I don't foresee, I don't, I don't foresee it happening, I can't say for sure. There's also the potential to, to fund a portion from our undesigned fund and to bond a portion. There's, there's different variables that can get thrown into it, not to say that we would do that either way. Bonded completely, funded completely, or funded partially and bonded partially, but there is.
Yeah, when Stuart gave his presentation, they don't recommend bonding because you do tie up the town's finances, if something should happen to the committee, then the town's responsible, they really don't.
No, no, and, and we're not a large enough town, our, our yearly surcharge income is, is, is probably not enough to sustain, you know, over a million dollar bonds or any bond for that.
Yeah, so, so that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, that's not likely.
No.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Yeah, the library is still pursuing grants, it sounds like that would be.
And we also need to be mindful as, when we do get that, the next step, the, um, application for funding, we do have the ability to partially fund it too, just be, if they're, say, if they're asking for a million, we can, if we say, you know, I think we can afford to give them two hundred and fifty, we can give them two hundred and fifty. We can put some money towards that project, we don't have to cover the whole thing. If we as a committee don't feel that we have the financial capabilities to do so.
Our, our responsibility is to maintain itself flexible.
Correct.
There could be other excellent projects, maybe around the corner.
We've already funded a lot of great projects in this town with CPC funds, a lot of them, every one of them.
Not they all, they're really, really worthwhile. Um, do I have any other public input?
Just a question, do you have any, um, applications for eligibility printed out to the season to solve the tap?
I do not.
Sure.
Oh, the, oh, the one that was submitted? No blanks, I do not have a blank.
I don't have, we don't access anymore.
Well, you have a copy of the library, is there?
Yeah, I'd like your copy.
Yeah, that's our full meeting packet from tonight.
Yeah, that, that's just the application number, this is on the agenda.
If you're wrapping, just wrap it up.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no. That's just the library.
All right, so, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we adjourned at six fifty-five, thank you all.
Good.